Good afternoon, everyone, and good afternoon to our constituents that are online. The Henry County Board of Elections and Registration Meeting will now come to order, and we will follow our agenda. I will start with the invocation. Everyone, please bow your heads. God of wonderful plans, we call upon your name as we begin our meeting. Be faithful to your promise to listen to those who beckon you. And as we set about making plans for in the best interest of voters here in Henry County, as we confront difficult decisions that will affect many people's lives, show us a future full of hope. Turn your ear to hear our prayers. Every day, we will bless you and praise your name forever. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board, we have our agenda in front of us. Do we have any amendments to the agenda? I personally, I have an amendment to the agenda under Section 11, Executive Session. We have, I want to make an amendment to remove the executive session. We are unable to do the executive session today because the Communications Department is unable to support us this evening. Unfortunately, we were planning to do that executive session to go over some personnel matters. We will have to reschedule that, so I want to make an amendment to remove that. Do I have a motion? A vote? Aye.
Aye.
It was unanimous. I'd also like to make an addition to the agenda, and we can add it under the same area, under Section 11, Schedule Meeting.
I second.
Okay. Any discussion? Vote? It's unanimous. Any other changes to the agenda? Okay. So we'll move on in the agenda. Move on to acceptance of the board minutes. You have those board minutes in your packet. We'll start off with the board minutes from August 3rd. Do I have a motion to accept the board minutes from August 3rd?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? Have a vote? Aye. Unanimous to accept the board minutes from August 3rd. We'll move on to the board minutes from August 10th, the special call hearing. Do I have a motion to accept the board minutes from August 10th?
So moved to accept.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Do I have a vote? Aye. It's unanimous. We'll move on to the minutes from August 17th, the Workshop Voter Education. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes for August 17th?
I so moved, Chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Do I have a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous to accept the board minutes from August 17th, Workshop Voter Education. Move on in the agenda. We move on to the Director Report. Director Pitts?
Good afternoon, Board. So for my Director's Report, first, I will begin with absentee ballot requests by mail. Currently, up until yesterday, September 6th, we have 2,117 ready-to-go absentee ballots by mail once ballots are received. These are the total number that we actually have prepared, envelopes ready, just waiting on ballots to stuff into the envelopes and get them out. They've all been accepted and issued. As far as rollover, there were 1,505. And then, as far as anything that came in and accepted and issued from August 22nd, when we began receiving absentee ballot applications, requests, there was a total of 612. Now, there were no rejects at this time, but I will continue to give you all an update and report on whether or not we have rejects or any issues, or as the numbers continue to climb, we'll update you all.
Excuse me, Director Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Where can we find that information concerning the absentee applications, rejects, or any information referring to that?
So normally, we don't do this up until, we don't give reports of that until October 17th. And it's October 17th this year for this particular election. But every election, the first day of the advanced early voting, we begin giving tallies of not only the absentee reports up until that date, then we daily give reports letting you know the increase in numbers, whether or not the rejects or whatnot, as well as giving numbers of how many people have actually reported to come to the different voting locations for early voting. So you'll begin seeing that report October 17th.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Can you repeat how many have been requested so far?
2,117.
Okay.
As a total.
All right, so that's what we're looking at as of this date?
That we have ready to go when the ballots come in.
Okay. Thank you, Director Pitts. Thank you, Terrance.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? Next, ballot proofing. So with ballot proofing, we, because of City of Stockbridge, they have an annexation referendum that will be on the November ballot. And because of that, we are having to make new district combo codes for the City of Stockbridge. So once moving all those things in place, having to go into redistricting with, I think you all are familiar, it's a three-day process. We finally got that process completed. We have already reported to CES, as well as the state, that everything is completed and ready. So what they're doing now, they're in the process of actually making our project. So once the project is completed, then we can get our ballots rolling, and then that's when, once we get our ballots in, we'll start going forward with getting the absentee ballots out that we're already processing, ready to go. Now, as far as, I'm gonna jump right into LNA since we were speaking about the project. So LNA is logic and accuracy testing of the machines. And this is where we go in and we get the machines prepared as far as loading the actual election, as well as testing the machines and making sure that they work properly, making sure that we test and update the scanners with people, you know, do their ballots through. And that process actually started August 24th. We actually had this also published in the Henry Herald on August 24th. And being that we are not able to actually do the actual testing of the machines right now because of the packet, the project, we have already set up about three advanced voting locations, have them already set up and ready to go. So, because we have a little process that we have where we have them set up, where we go from one station to the other, and going through the process of testing each and every piece of machine, including the batteries. So we've already begun being in preparation of that. So once the project comes in, we can immediately start going forward. So we've been told it's a good, promising that we'll possibly get the project on Friday, which is tomorrow. If not, it shouldn't be long before that. And I will definitely keep you all updated on that as well.
So we've already completed our LNA testing? No, we have not.
No. No. We haven't started, other than during the preparation of, it's a process of getting all the machines out. It's just a setup that we have.
Okay.
And that's a part of the process of it. So we were able to begin to start that. So once the project comes in, we prove the ballots, everything is okay.
Okay.
Then we will go forward with going ahead and loading it, testing the machines, and making sure everything is running properly.
And that process is known as LNA testing?
It's a part of LNA testing as well.
And that's open to the public?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And we're gonna let everybody know that they can come?
It's been published in the Henry Herald as of August 24th.
Okay.
It's on the elections website, and it's also posted on the door of the Elections and Voter Registration Office on 40 Atlanta Street.
Thank you, Director Pitts.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
Director Pitts, have you had any constituents come to see the process yet?
No, ma'am. We have not.
Is it being done in the open room there?
Yes, ma'am.
With the machines?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. And what are the three precincts that you tested it on?
We haven't tested any. We just brought them forward until the open area is set up and prepared.
I see, I got you.
This is just a process, a step, you know, we follow certain steps to make sure that every step is followed through.
Okay.
And so we just already got it set up and ready, so when project comes in and we prove the ballots, we can go forward.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions? So next, we're gonna talk about staffing. So we have had some issues, as y'all know, with getting some positions filled, but we're moving along. Things are coming up to speed. I'm very happy to report that we're in the process of interviewing for the Assistant Director position. I'm very excited about that. We're hoping to fill this position within 45 to 60 days. And I will definitely keep you all posted on that. I've worked with the HR department with helping us fulfill some positions that were vacant, and we were able to take two of the positions and combine, which is the clerk temp position, to make an administrative assistant position. I have not had an opportunity to have a follow-up with HR as of today. They were in a meeting when I contacted them to get a follow-up. So hopefully, they'll have something soon, and I will definitely keep y'all updated, if not before, if not the next meeting before, by email. Also, with the positions that we had, we were able to move some people into what we call, one would, four would be part-time permanent. So we were able to take Joey Brown, as you all know, as well as Angela Fanny, and combine this position to have them both and have them as our Program Coordinator One. Also, we were able to take some clerk temps, some poll workers that have been dedicated and working with us outside of election cycle to help the office still run, being that we were sure we were able to move them up to clerk temps. And we were able to take one of our clerk temps that have been there for 13 years and be able to move them up into the Program Assistant One position. So things are moving along. We're able to take our staff and show them that we see their work, we see their worthiness, and just wanting them to feel good about continuing to work with elections. And I really appreciate HR working with us. Also, we're working on possibly mid-year, looking for some more positions, and we're just gonna be hopeful for that. Yes, ma'am.
So is Mr. Brown going to be a full-time employee now?
He's on the permanent staff as part-time.
Permanent part-time.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Mayo?
And Ms. Mayo, she's moved to full-time.
That's what I thought you said.
Yes, ma'am.
So is Mr. Brown gonna be the only permanent? How do you say it again, permanent part-time?
Permanent part-time.
That seems like it's, doesn't sound right.
It's just taking account, this is the way that they, you know, have, the way that they, yeah, HR have, you know.
Good, that's great.
Yes, ma'am.
Director Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
For the permanent part-time staff, would they have access to benefits?
No, they will not.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And how many hours will they be working a week?
So during? Out of election cycle, they are allowed to work up to 29 hours.
Okay.
But during election cycle, they are allowed more quite naturally because of the increase of work.
A question, Director Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Jessica Clay, the Program Coordinator One position?
Mm-hmm.
Is, you mentioned two people taking on that role?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so are they considered permanent part-time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so there'll be two people just covering that role?
Yes.
And as you mentioned, it sounds like you have people working in various positions now. So how, I know we just, you just spoke to us about the Assistant Director's position?
Yes.
And hoping to fill that in the next 45 to 60 days?
Correct.
How many positions does this leave open for the Department of Elections? Or does this fill most of those vacancies?
It has filled those vacancies, where now we're looking for an Assistant Director, what we're currently interviewing now. And I'm awaiting some information that closes up and make the position of Administrative Assistant for our department, so that I can post that job.
Okay. And that was the former?
That was the former clerk?
Clerk Two.
Clerk Two.
It was two of them.
Thank you.
Combined those, so that we can have that position.
Awesome.
And would they apply to the HR department for those positions?
Yes, ma'am, will be posted on the county website for the employment.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
So with the county doing the reclassification study, there may be some changes there in terms of salaries and maybe even description of those positions, correct?
It is a possibility.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, next, we're gonna go to Public Education. So the previous workshop, there were a lot of things that were discussed and different things that were wanting to take place. And what we did was, we made sure that we got some ideas together. We want to thank Board Member Stetslar for coming up with her postcard. And I know in the workshop, we had talked about possibly doing postcards and placing them at the libraries, senior centers, and parks and rec. And because of the budget monies, we kind of figured we will bring it back a little bit. Thanks to my cluster leader, Shannon, she came up with the idea to do a poster. So that way, we can minimize the number of things that needed to be printed. So what I've done is I've forwarded over to our Communications Director, Melissa Robinson, and she's gonna review it, take a look at it, and make sure everything is good. And then we'll just go forward, we're trying to get that process done and getting these posters out. We also made sure that we did get some quotes on the outside just in case if they were bearable to handle with our budget. I did list the quote into your packet. You can take a look at it. It explains the different types of ways that the postcards can be made, whether it's front-only, front and back, tri-folds. And you'll see the dollar amounts and the quantity of what it would take to have these done. Some of the other items that you all had spoken about, from the coloring book, the senior books, poll worker book, as well as fans and whatnot for the young voters that come in with their parents, as well as the senior voters, something to just give them something to think about and love elections. We are still awaiting some quotes on those things, but once we get those information, get that information in, we'll definitely forward that to you all as well. And that's it for Public Education. Do y'all have any questions on that?
Yes, Director Pitts.
Yes, ma'am.
Julie, a question, but I do just want to reiterate what we've been saying, is that we are excited and think that it is important to educate the citizens of Henry County about elections, about not just voting on Election Day, but some of those questions that our citizens may have in regards to election, and to eliminate some of the confusion that comes with elections. So I'm very excited. Thank you for going out and moving forward with obtaining quotes for us. We are looking forward to meeting with Director Melissa Robinson. Board Member Stetslar and I will be meeting with her soon to discuss the various resources that are available through the county. And we're just looking forward to seeing those flyers, those posters, public service announcements, et cetera, out there for our public. So I just want the public to be, to look out for the, for that information that's gonna be coming their way soon.
Yes. And forgive me, I did not mean to overlook that Melissa's team, Ms. Robinson, they have done an awesome video for voter education. We just have a few things that we have to give it back with them with. And then I'll forward it to you all, so that you can see it, and then they'll be able to broadcast and ensure it. They have done an amazing job with their team, with getting the video together, taking the information that we provided them, some important dates and things to hit on. They did a great job, so I'm really excited about that as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So I'm gonna go forward with board requests. We only had two board requests. One was to supply and forward over the poll worker training, which started yesterday, and it was a wonderful start at the gate that will be continued on throughout the month, as well as throughout the first part of October. Also, there was a request about financial disclosures for candidates and election officials. If you look in your packet, I was, I made sure I supplied you all the information that's given to any candidate that comes into our office to qualify. All the information they need to know, dates, schedules, deadlines, as well as where to go. So I know you all were very interested, some of you were interested and wanted to know a little bit more about that. So I provided that packet that we provide the candidates, so that you all can have that to review.
Director Pitts?
Yes.
Do you, do you have any problems or issues with candidates meeting these deadlines?
Uh, yeah, they, sometimes they do not. So what they do is, at our office, most of them know they can come by and bring their reports. They actually do have a website that's in your packet, that's the henrycountygeorgia.easivoec campaign finance dot com. And they can go there to file their documents electronically. We have a local filing officer, which is Catherine Glenn, our supervisor. can file, we, what happens is when they report all the information to us, our office actually is filing with the state ethics. And we have to do that within 30 days. Now, just recently, I guess, right at July 28th, we learned that it is actually our office responsibility, of what you just said, to send a report to ethics of non-filers and late filers. So what we did is, we performed that task. We sent it through, letting them know that the different candidates that had not. And it is the responsibility of the candidates to know when to report, when they're due, and when to file them. But, yeah, that's about it.
Also, I'd add one thing. I think that we need to make it clear that it's not just the candidates that have to file these. The currently elected officials are required to be filing these as well. So if we can find a way to remind our elected officials that they have some reports to file, that would be wonderful.
Yes. Yes, that, that is the packet that we give to the candidates that qualify. But again, those that are normally elected, you know, do have those documents as well. So any of those that should be filing, have not, or late, we have gone forward, making sure we get those reports to ethics.
And Director Pitts, from what you're relaying to us and what the public needs to understand too, is that elected officials know that they should file their reports and know their due dates. And if they don't, then it's Supervisor Glenn, because she is our filing officer, will report that information to the, I think you said, the ethics committee?
Yes, ma'am. By law, we do have to send it to them.
Yes, because Supervisor Glenn is, she does her job by filing that information and sending it to the state. And she's a very busy person by doing that and other things. She does not have time to call elected officials or send emails and reminders to remind them something that they are responsible for doing.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When are those financial disclosures due?
I have, put the packet in your folder. It has all the scheduled dates and deadlines.
I saw that.
Yes, ma'am. Well, that ends my Director's Report. There are no other questions?
Director Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to get some information on this year's poll worker training. Was Mr. Joey still being out? I think he is.
He is, he's still out.
He's still out. So we have the backup person running that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And still the same training materials?
Same training materials, even some updated material.
Okay.
Some things that maybe weren't quite as tight as we would like it to be from previous elections, where we're reiterating, we just changed it up a little bit to make it more interesting and to grab the attention of the poll workers to want to love elections and love what it's about and the process, and making sure we do things according to law.
And did you, you said, you mentioned you had an open records request for the training materials? Or did you, you said you had a, you were bringing up the, maybe I misheard you, the training materials. Did somebody request to see those, or was that?
No, I was saying, during my board request, there was a board member that requested the poll worker training schedule.
Okay, yes. Okay. I had one, actually more than one, I had two comments about the training materials that we may want to look into and make sure everything in there is in compliance with the law. So just double-check for me.
Okay.
That would be great.
All right.
And before we move on, just wanted to share with the public also and Board Member Stetslar, that last time before, I think it was, I can't remember exactly when it was, a number of board members did attend poll worker training. And that is open to you, Board Member Stetslar. I planned to attend one of the trainings. I was unable to because of work conflicted with that. So I think that will be helpful. Other board members found it helpful.
I do plan to attend as well. Actually, I got invited to, I could deliver at night with another friend. So you will see me there, for sure.
Thank you, Director Pitts.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me, Jennifer, I had one other question for Director Pitts. When do you think that the precinct cards will be available from the Secretary of State's office?
So we held off on the we held off on the, she found my information about the precinct cards. So due to the redistricting era that took place, we, we kind of held off on sending those out. Um, we just have not had an opportunity to go through each and every one of them to remove the incorrect card, so I kind of would like you all to weigh in. Um, wanted to know, would you all would like for us to go ahead and mail them out as they are and do some type of statement? Explaining that you may have a wrong incorrect card? Or do you want us to go ahead and do like a reorder and send them out? Because that was a question, um, I know at least a constituent and possibly a board member that mentioned, because I have it in my notes.
Um, Director Pitts, what would, is, is there any, couple of questions. Is there any way to segregate the cards that have the wrong um, precincts? Re, with the redistricting era and send out the rest of the precinct cards? And how long would it take to reorder those particular ones? And I guess number three is, do you have to order all precinct cards? Or can you just order the ones that are wrong?
So in order to really do it, to make sure you don't leave anybody out, you would have to do all, if we did a reorder, we would have to do all. We attempted to do the extracting the ones that were incorrect, but they're not in a way that you can just grab them and just pull this out and pull it out here. It's like a needle in a haystack type thing. So I didn't want to move forward with maybe continue to do that, and it'd take too long because of staffing to have the pool to do that. Or should we just reorder?
What is the cost involved for reordering?
I don't have that number for you.
Ballpark figure.
Hmm. Eighty, I don't know, eighty, maybe eighty thousand? We have not sent them out, so it wouldn't be a double. See, that's, that would be anyway, is what I'm saying, regardless of whether or not we send them out. That's, that's just going to be anyway. Yes, ma'am.
To answer that question, that's the cost of sending them out, the postage.
Postage, yes, I'm sorry. There's no cost for the freight.
Okay, so um, I do have a question. So on, if I go to my voter page and I looked up, looked up my precinct card digitally, that information that is currently there is correct?
It is correct.
Okay. Um, being that that's the case, and it doesn't cost anything to, to have them reordered from the state, my suggestion is to just simply have them reordered, so that we can get those and get them out timely.
Also, Director Pitts, um, I believe in, um, either you or Supervisor Glenn can correct me. I believe I saw on the buzz that is a, there is a grant application available to help with postage. Um, I would recommend that we apply for that grant application to help with the postage, to send those out. And I would agree with Vice Chair um, Collins to reprint, um, because we don't need to have any further confusion for our voters here in Henry County. So twofold, to um, request a reprinting and um, apply for that grant application for the postage.
We've already applied for that grant.
Okay.
Excellent. And what is the timeline for getting, getting them out now, reorder and then getting them out?
I would have to submit that order and let you know, because they don't give us a, it's not a definite, they tell you on a regular timeframe, when it's not of such a large quantity, it could be two weeks. But it could take maybe three or four weeks to get such a large quantity for the entire um, voter registration voters of Henry County. But once we submit that order, they can give us a, they usually give us a timeline, a date that's possibly to come through.
So the possibility rests that they would not be available before the early voting, is that correct?
No, I can't see it happening before early voting.
That's distressing.
It'll be close to early voting, but not.
Very distressing to me.
Yes, but it will, it can happen, because I can submit this ticket tomorrow. Now, I definitely can see it happening before the elections. Because if you go early voting, you're going any voting location to vote for any precinct. But if you're wanting to go to your precinct on Election Day, if we go ahead and move forward with that, that would be a good thing to do. And then that way they can have those cards before November eighth, the Election Day.
Okay.
Director Pitts, I think, um, given that it's not going to cost, the reprint won't cost us.
Correct.
Um, and that you have applied, the office has applied for a grant for the postage, which is really awesome. Um, I think it, it is the most logical and reasonable solution is just to go ahead and reorder them. So that's what I would vote on.
I agree. I appreciate that. Any other questions?
So I have a motion um, to recom, that recommend for um, Director Pitts to reorder precinct cards and apply for the grant for postage. Do I have a motion?
Soon move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I think we just had that.
Yeah, you did, you're right. Going by Robert's rules. May I have a vote? It's unanimous. Thank you, Director Pitts.
Thank you.
Move on to old business in the agenda. That's you again.
Yes, ma'am, I'm still here. So I wanted to let you all know, thank God, we were able to get Mount Zion United Methodist Church. They will, they will be replacing um, Ellenwood Old Community Church, who were not able to allow us to use their facility going forward. We've met with Reverend Dr. Greg Freeman. Um, he was more than happy to assist with helping us. Um, we've already spoken with him. We have the process rolling. We're making him a vendor. And um, he's given key over to us to have accessibility, to be able to get into the building, to set up equipment and whatnot. So everything is looking very awesome in that area. Very excited reporting we did get that done. I've already sent the notice in to post um, into the Henry Herald, the polling place change. And what we plan on doing is going to different areas around that area, from stores to anyone that allow us to post notices, letting people be aware that there is a polling place change in that area. We also have um, this big sign, it's yellow, I think it's, it may be about five by four foot. And what we're going to do is place that at the previous location, so that when people still, that may not have gotten the word, that they can go to their new polling location, and it will have the information there for them. So we're trying to make sure we go ahead and start putting that information out, not just in the Henry Herald. Um, we're just putting it throughout the community as well with signs, so everyone can see and know where to go.
Director Pitts, I would like to see it on our webpage, so the video goes there. There'll be a attention notice that that precinct has been, location has been changed.
Okay.
As well as Facebook or Instagram if it's been set up.
All of platforms.
Will, will you be sending something out to the voters in that precinct?
Yes, they will get a new precinct card.
Okay.
They will get a new precinct card. And that is all from me.
All right.
We have a next on the agenda.
Bonnie Witherspoon, I believe that is Attorney Rowan.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. Um, Bonnie Witherspoon, if you all remember, on eighteen, April eighteenth of this year, was disqualified as the Chief magistrate judge candidate. Because uh, the candidate is required to be an attorney, and she was not an attorney at the time uh, that she applied for candidacy. Uh, during that meeting, um, uh, Chair Member, excuse me, um, Board Member Schmelz. Sorry if I'm mispronouncing your last name.
Schmelz.
Schmelz, okay. Um, actually made a motion, Ms. Uh, Witherspoon had made a request to um, to um, receive a refund of her qualification fee. Uh, at that time, a motion was made and uh, tabled as to whether she could get her feedback or not, because uh, we wanted to obtain additional information. Um, specifically, you wanted me to reach out to the Secretary of State, uh, which I did do. Um, and spoke with counsel for the Secretary of State. Uh, basically, um, we wanted to know if any of the qualification fees actually went to the state. Um, and I was able to verify that none of those fees went to the state. I was specifically to the county. Uh, the secretary, the attorney did indicate that the uh, Secretary of State would only get involved if there was some type of complaint in this circumstance. Um, so the decision as to whether uh, she um, receives a refund of her qualification fees uh, is up to the board. Uh, as stated before, and this will be just a reminder regarding qualification fees, OCGA Section twenty-one dash two dash one thirty-four E states that the qualifying fee shall be returned to the candidate in the event such candidate withdraws, dies, or disqualifies prior to the close of a qualifying period. However, after the close of the qualifying period, the qualifying fee shall not be returned to the candidate for any reason, including withdrawal, death, or disqualification. Provided however, that if disqualification is the result of an error of negligence of the office, officer with whom such candidate qualified and not the result of any action of the candidate, and such error or negligence is verified in writing by the Secretary of State, such fee may be refunded to the candidate. And due to that last part requiring a verification by the Secretary of State of negligence, which is why I reached out to the secretary to see, to see if that was actually needed in this circumstance. Uh, but as uh, stated before, the Secretary of State indicated that they would not get involved unless the candidate filed a complaint. Uh, in this circumstance, Ms. Uh, Witherspoon was disqualified on April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, which was after the close of the qualifying period. Um, which means she's not automatically entitled to a return of her fees. Um, as stated previously, um, she was required to be uh, an attorney at the time. House Bill six eighty-eight, um, which imposes requirement, um, has been around since nineteen eighty-eight. It's over thirty years old, and the candidates are responsible for knowing the qualifications, um, when they apply for candidacy. That being said, uh, the decision as to whether or not she um, receives a refund of her qualification fees is up to the board. So if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer those questions.
That fee was over five thousand dollars, wasn't it?
I don't know that it was, uh, hold on for a second here. Uh, I believe the-
Four thousand, it's like a close.
It was close, it wasn't quite five, it wasn't five thousand dollars.
It was over six.
Ooh.
Really?
I don't know that it was over.
Yeah, it was.
Uh, and let me look up the exact amount here. Uh, Uh, she, Ms. Uh, Witherspoon wrote a letter, and in that letter, she indicated that the reimbursement amount or the amount that she was requesting was four thousand seven hundred twenty-seven dollars and four cents. Again, that's four thousand seven hundred twenty-seven dollars and four cents.
I'd like to make a motion that we refund Ms. Bonnie Witherspoon's qualification fee due to our error.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Um, I would just like to state um, and share with the public that during that time of qualification, um, we, the entire state had a lot going on with redistricting, um, qualification, um, um, there was also um, an implementation of a new system. Um, the elections, um, departments throughout the state were um, transitioning to that new system. Uh, um, election net back to the um, old system. Um, there was a lot going on, and um, I will personally say, when I tried to find that law, I couldn't find it, just searching. So um, and I do agree that um, candidates should know what their qualifications are. However, um, as the election department, um, we um, should also be privy to what those qualifications are too. Um, so when we made that motion at that meeting during that time, we took all of that into consideration. Um, so thank you, that's what I wanted to share.
I would also like to add that many times we use Google University, and the information that comes up is the information that we receive and we think is factual and true. And in this case, that was a case where the information was not true anymore or any longer. So um, we took that into consideration when we were, when it was proposed that should be refunded the first time.
Ready for a vote, everyone? Aye.
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 It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Rowan. Next on the agenda is the infamous voter challenge procedure, and I say infamous because we've bought this and tabled it several times, and we're going to get this done this evening, so everyone bear with us. Um, everyone on the board, you have a copy of it in your packet, and what I did was I asked um, the um, election staff to please print it out with the comments, and Board Member Stetslar, so thank you for um, reviewing that and adding the comments. And I tried to reply back to each one of your comments.
I feel that.
Um, they were very, very helpful, because it always helps to have someone else to um, take a second and third look at it. And Attorney Rowan, please um, feel free to provide any feedback that you may have. Um, because this um, voter um, challenge procedure and/or policy, whatever we decide it may be, has made um, definite um, um, iterations and changes um, since the first time we um, looked at this. So if we um, can start, um, let's see, Ashley, Board Member Stetslar, I'm going to ask you to start with your comments, and then we'll go down the line, and if anyone else has any um, feedback. So, Board Member Stetslar.
So um, after uh, we had reviewed the document, um, and I, I took a look at what we were really doing. Um, I think the only place, there are a couple of places that I have the most concern, so maybe we should hash those out first, because I think, I think it's probably easier. I'm going to need Attorney Rowan. Um, I'm going to need her insight as well. Uh, so let's take a look at, um, let's go down to where, number six, where we talk about um, challenges that would fail to meet the minimum standard of proof required by uh, twenty-one two 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 nine A, um, should be rejected. Those reasons include, but not, are not limited to, and then on the following page. If we could just look at B and C. Um, B is the assertion that a challenged voter's name is not affiliated with the ad- B is the assertion that a challenged voter's name is not affiliated with the address of the registration in any governmental database, which I think might be tied in with C, the voter caging challenges, which of course are broad and apply to large numbers of people. My concern with B is really, I think that goes to the heart of what the issue is. If a voter comes in and they're, they don't actually live at the address that they said they live at, isn't that the heart of what a voter challenge, challenge really is? So, I thought maybe we could start the discussion there and ask Attorney Rowan to maybe come up with some clarifying language on what we meant there.
So, um, let's see, what did I say?
Well, so, we have, we have state law that says this is the address, or this is, these are the, these are the types of addresses which are acceptable for registration-
Yes.
-as an elector. I'm trying to make sure I'm saying it in a, in the right manner. So, we already have the state law.
Yes, because that's what I outlined in my reply, that the out, 21 code, 212-216 and 21-217 outlines qualification of electors and rules of determining residence, and Georgia law does address this. And then you also have 212-417 that outlines the accepted identification for voter registration, and so the Georgia law already addresses this. My interpretation of this, an assertion, so seeing an assertion not having any actual proof that the challenged voter's name is not affiliated with an address in the registration of any governmental database. Because at the beginning of this, what it's saying is that the challenge, the burden is on the challenger. So, the burden, the challenger has to show proof that these names or this name does not have a residence or does not have, shouldn't be registered, is not a registered voter in Henry County.
Okay. And what about an assertion-
And let me stop there. Attorney Rowan, am I misinterpreting?
I don't think you're misinterpreting. I think, um, at all, I think you're really, the both of you are really not saying anything different.
Different, okay.
You're basically, you're, you're understanding what you're saying. If there's actually proof that the address is different, then they should be able to bring that in if there's actual proof, like, for instance, where we had someone, the title of the home or whatever, the tax commissioner's documentation, that kind of stuff. But here, the assertion means someone can't just say, hey, I saw in this document here that your address is something else. So, I think that's what, but we can clarify the word assertions, I guess, to say, I guess, a mere allegation? I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe something like a mere allegation or claims without-
Proof.
-without some sort of objective-
Substantive.
Substantive proof.
Yeah, subs, well, I wouldn't even say substantive proof. I would say claims which are not accompanied with, uh, hmm, proof. I want to say that if a claim is made, we also expect some backup documentation that isn't just Google, but I'm not sure how to put that into a nice tidy language. Off the top of my head, if I thought about it for 15 minutes, I could probably come up with something, but that's what we're trying.
What did you say? I used the word substantive.
Which means, which means that it is like qualified, that it actually does prove it, not just, not just any documentation.
Right. So, substantive can be subjective, and that's my concern. I want to make sure that we're clear that we're going to take it seriously if we have documentation from a governmental entity? Would that work? Claims which are not accompanied by documentations obtained through legitimate governmental sources? Or is that too wordy? I get wordy. I get real wordy.
I think substantive proof.
Substantive.
Substantive proof.
Proof.
Yeah.
Okay, so that really puts that concern, that's not even a concern anymore.
Okay.
Uh, so number, for letter C, um, I clarify, and this is just me, but I just clarified some language, but the, of, the really, the one thing that I wanted to talk about were large numbers.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that term, large numbers, is now, okay, well, what's large? Is 100 large, is 50 large?
Well, I think that was a good point.
Yeah, and then certain neighborhoods.
Yeah, I think that was a good point.
I don't like that language. I think we could probably come up with something a little smoother, Attorney Rowan. What, how do you feel about that?
Well, what, what number at, uh-
Uh, we're still at 6C.
Huh?
Six C.
I'm starting.
C.
Six, no, I know you're at 6C. You're saying you want to change the large number to something specific, under starting piece by piece?
Yeah, I think, I think we do need to change it to something specific, because it's, it's too vague and ambiguous, instead of just large numbers. And I didn't know exactly what number to start with, so in my comments, I agreed it is a vague term, and I threw out the number 50 or 100, or I don't, I'm not quite sure what number we should clarify, classify as large.
I, I'm wondering if it's already addressed in state law.
Hmm, I looked, and not less Attorney Rowan or anyone else on the board can say, I, I didn't see anything that talks about large numbers, because what we're talking about are challenges, because in, in the code, you can have unlimited.
Mm-hmm.
So, there is no, I didn't see anything that specified large.
I knew it was unlimited. I was under the impression, and correct me if I'm wrong, since we've had so many changes to the law over the last three years, I was under the impression that each challenge had to be individual.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So-
However, they can be unlimited.
And they are unlimited. I, if that's what the law allows, then how can we, how can we fit that allowance within a framework that says it's unlimited except if you do this, this, and this? Because that's what we're saying, right?
Well, I think an example that we've seen in other counties is seeing a, a number that is not individualized, of example, maybe a spreadsheet of numbers, and they're clearly not individualized. You, there, there's no, it was just a, maybe a list of names with addresses that were pulled out from wherever, I don't know where they were pulled out, and it was clearly, they didn't, they didn't, the person did not look at and say, okay, this is, this is the reason why this person should not be, or this is the reason why, it was just a list, and it was clearly not individualized, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does, and that, I would certainly agree, is not the way to do it. It is not fitting with the spirit of the law.
So, I don't know, if we're talking this out, does that make, maybe, so, do we need that one then, if we have one that says non-individualized or generalized claims, Attorney Rowan?
Well, I think with the voter caging challenges, I think for C, where it says voter caging challenges, or, as in OR instead of ARE, or multiple challenges, or, or you can say are challenges not made individually.
Okay.
And will not be considered, or will be rejected outright.
Okay.
I like that. That makes it more clear, that we are still honoring the law for individual unlimited challenges, but that we aren't going to entertain handing me, handing us a spreadsheet with 5,000 names on it.
Okay, so C would be voter caging challenges or challenges not made individually, or individual challenges, which, everyone, you prefer.
And that takes care of the certain neighborhoods language as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Number 10 was the next, but I don't remember why we changed that. But that might be your-
Well, I misunderstood when I read it. That was my fault.
Okay.
I misunderstood what shall means. I wanted to make sure that was right, so thank you.
Okay, so we're, we're good on 10?
Yes, we are.
Okay, we're good on 10. That was, those were my, um, those were my comments, and I feel that we've addressed them now, so I know, no longer have any concerns.
Okay. Any, anyone, anyone else have any other amendments to, or any other questions to the procedure for responding to voter challenges? Okay, I would like a motion to accept the procedure for responding to voter challenges with the, um, with the changes, approved changes. Do I have a, go ahead, Ms. Milner.
Go ahead, go off your motion.
Do I? I think I said it already.
Yeah, I did.
Go ahead, Ms. Milner.
I, I second your motion. I assume that was your motion.
That was my motion.
And I second your motion.
Any discussion, further discussion? We have a vote?
Aye.
It was unanimous. We finally got it done.
Congratulations.
And I would like to share with the public, thanks to Board Member Stessel, we will, in the soon future, we will work on one for, which one is it?
2122-
30.
Yes.
This, this one covers 212229.
Yes.
We will begin 212230.
Yes, thank you.
And 212-
30?
Yes.
Is about-
Hmm, yes, well, we're going to get, maybe need to have some input from Attorney Rowan, because just the topic, since we put the code number out there, just to, just to say in general.
Well, if you read the two sections side by side, that's where this question came up. 229 and 230 are very similar, but clearly different, because the legislature made it two different sections, so-
Yes.
Um, I do plan on sending a note to County Attorney Rowan and asking for a little more, because even my Georgia code annotated doesn't have any additional information on 212230. What is the difference between that and 212229? Clearly, there is a difference.
Yes, there is.
But I'm not smart enough to find it.
Um, I'll take a stab at it if Attorney Rowan will let me. For 21230, that one would allow someone to challenge an elector or voter, actually, on the day of voting.
Yeah.
Yes, so, just a quick summary, that would allow that to happen, and that person could actually show up at a polling place, and they would get stopped from voting, and then as a board, we would be called to have a hearing, yes.
Okay.
And that would be on the day of voting.
Then that is one thing that we need to, that is a much larger process and discussion. Thank you.
And Attorney Rowan, please correct me if I was, anything was wrong with that particular code.
I have to look at the statute, because I've read all the statutes, but I don't know them off the top of my head, so I have to-
What? You don't know all the law right then and there at your fingertips?
Usually I do, but today, I'm just-
I got you.
All right, Dana. A lot of law floating around in there.
So, thank you, thank you both. I just wanted for the viewers who are listening and who were present with us to have an idea of what we were referring to.
Thank you, Vice Chair Collins. And we'll move on to new business, and I believe this is Director Pitts Municipal IGA and its intergovernmental agreements.
Thank you, Gina. In your package, you will find the intergovernmental agreements with each municipality of Henry County. I just wanted us to go over those at a later date, but I wanted to bring it to the attention of the board of looking at them, seeing if there are any changes that may need to be made, some revising. Sometimes there are things that take place that I think haven't been said or done in a while, and it's just time to revisit it and just take a look at it and work with the municipals on making sure that we are able to come together in agreement on what we need to do to make sure they have a successful election during their election time.
Director Pitts, is there anything in these intergovernmental agreements that we need, that you want us to be aware of, that we need to look at in particular?
Um, one thing in particular why I was even wanting to revise it, yes, is just knowing that when it comes to doing the elections, if I am going to be required to do certain things, let's say for an example, being responsible to publish a certain notice into the legal organ, I need the counties, the municipals to make sure that they have the correct wording that needs to be submitted for the notice, because sometimes the language, whether it's a bill, um, it, the wording is long, and some, I don't, I'm not a lawyer, and I should, I don't want to be in place where I have to minimize the bill and not knowing what's the correct thing to submit and, you know, not submit, so. Just want us to go over, sometimes little things like that that you don't think about until it actually arrives, and I just want us to be totally ahead of the game for next year, to go ahead and start reviewing some of these and coming together with some things if we see that, you know, because some of them are really old.
Okay.
And so, I want us just to look at it and just make sure that we are doing everything that is up to date with law, and making sure that we are not doing anything that we should not, and pretty much just a revisit of it.
Um, Attorney Rowan, a question with, and I don't know if this can be done, but I wanted, also wanted to ask, the last time we had municipal elections, and this happened, I believe this happens every time, that on Election Day, if there is a municipal election and then versus city versus county, then our voters will have to go two different places to vote if everything is not on one ballot, and we found, I think it was the City of Hampton that was able to do that. And as the Board of Elections, we are not able to make that happen. The cities have to decide to combine their ballots. Is there any way that we can include some language in these intergovernmental agreements that will recommend the municipals to do that, so it will make it easier for the voters here in Henry County?
I'll look it up in the latest and look at the law to see if we can require them to actually have them on one ballot, excuse me, and get back to you all regarding that. But I need to look it up and make sure.
Okay, thank you, because if we, anything that we can do to move the municipals to do something like that, to combine the ballots, it would be hugely helpful to the citizens, to the voters here in Henry County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, sorry. So, do you have these in electronic format?
I do.
Would you send me it, so I can do my red lines?
I would send it to the entire board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Because I'll have red lines, y'all know that.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you for asking that, Board Member Stessel.
We have IGA from Stockbridge, you just didn't include it, is that correct?
It should be in your package.
I have it here.
I got it, I'm sorry.
You got something? Yes. Any other questions from the board for Director Pitts?
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on in the agenda to public comments. Before we get started, wanted to share with everyone, as of our last meeting, we, the board decided that for public comments, that you can come in to the meeting, date of, and share your public comments, because we wanted to keep it open for everyone, and we want to hear what the public has to say. Before we get started, just wanted to share some comments. No member of the public shall be permitted to make personal, impertinent slanderous or- or profane remarks to any member of the Board, staff, or general public. Any person who makes such remarks or who others loud, threatening, or personal or abusive language or engages in any other disorderly conduct which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any Board meeting shall, at the discretion of the Chair or majority of the Council, be barred from further audience before the Board during the meeting. Um, you will have three minutes, um, at the microphone to share your public comments. And when you come up, please share your name and, um, where you live in Henry County. Don't be shy.
I had one, um, person that pre-signed up.
Okay.
Which is, uh, Dr. Deborah Sykes.
Okay.
Sorry, ma'am, we can't hear what you're saying. What did you say?
She said she sent all of you an email.
Okay.
Said that she actually sent an email to decline to speak today. Correct.
Okay. Anyone else?
Can I, I want to make sure that, um, I'm understanding this correctly, so just to clarify. So they are able to come to the meeting and sign up prior to the meeting? Or they can come at any time as like now the floor is open to speak? Because I want to make sure that I am putting the notices correctly how it should be done. Because no one signed up. It was at the, right at front with the agendas.
We had no one sign up.
Okay.
So my wording was, if I'm incorrect, just, we can make changes, but, um, to my understanding, we've spoken from what was said with the Board, it was prior to the meeting to sign up and it was open to not be about the agenda and that they could put their name and what they want to speak on.
Madam Chair, if I may, um, if we have people from the public who want to speak at this meeting, um, did staff direct any of the public here today to sign up for public comment? Because a lot of people may not have known that they, um...
Yes, ma'am, it was in the notice, but it's up, it's at you all's discretion. That's what was said before. But if that's changing, I just want to make sure we do make it fair for all, if that's the situation.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be good going forward that if we have people, uh, from the public here, that staff, um, direct them to the form to fill out if they want to do public comment. I think at this meeting, we should make an exception.
Okay. So for clarity, just tell me again, going forward, when I do my notices, do I just leave it open that they can come at any time during the meeting to sign? So just put, okay, got you. Not prior to?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Director Pitts, for the clarification. Sir? And Supervising Leader, are you going to keep time for us?
I am. I'm ready.
Thank you.
Before I get into my time, I just want to thank Amika and I thank Catherine for all y'all have tried to help me with as far as clarifying information and getting information and I appreciate it. They've been very cooperative. Everybody that I've worked with at the Henry County Board of Elections has been cooperative and working with me. And, uh, I'm alive. My name is Robert, if you want to start the clock. My name is Robert Hinton and I live at nine oh four Flatshells Church Road, Stockbridge, Georgia. I've lived there all my life. I was born in McDonough, Georgia, in a doctor's office, so I know all about Henry County. I love Henry County and I'm not upset with any changes by anybody that's been moved to Henry County or anything. I read about that from certain people all the time, but I'm not. I just want the best for Henry County and I think that's what you as a Board want for Henry County as well. And to achieve that, I think we need to open our elections process more. We need to have more information available online. And I know that's not all together, you, the Board, or you, the Board of Elections issue because you have to have money to do that, you have to have programming to do that. But we need to have more information available because if we have everybody, all voters, and I trust all voters to look at this information and interpret the information, then we can get better results. As it is, it's not all available. It's not all readily available. There are certain reports that are available. There are certain things that are available. I'm sure it's all that, based on everything, that everybody can get in front of the public right now. But I think we need to have more information. There should be a lot of different things. And Amika and Ms. Thomas are both aware of what issues that I have asked about. I've asked for statistical type information. I'm not talking about great amounts of information, but, you know, and maybe sometimes I am asking for things that are more than I understand because it's not a transparent process. If it was a transparent process, everybody benefits from open processes that people can see, all voters. This has nothing to do with Democrats or Republicans or independents. It has to do with information. And voting is the most important thing that we can do as individuals. And we need to protect that right always. And to protect that, we need to be open. We need to have an open process that people can look at. They can bring it up. We have internet. We have all of this electronic wonder world that I don't like sometimes, but it's still there. But, and it's just not available. You know, there's very limited information as far as how many absentee ballots were requested, how many absentee ballots were actually mailed, how many absentee ballots were processed via lockbox, processed via mail. There's all kinds of statistical information that people would be more comfortable if they just understood the numbers and the process. Because when you don't understand, what do you do? You're a human being. I know what I do. When I don't understand, I create things in my mind. And that's not a healthy thing for any of us to do. So I just, you know, ask you to push the Board, push the Board of Commissioners. I speak to the Board, and I'll take, I know I'm over time, but I speak to the Board of Commissioners as well because they have a part in this game too. It's not just your responsibility. They've got to provide the funding. And the last thing I will say is, ten dollars an hour for a poll worker? Are you kidding? That's, you know, it's just not, it's not a human wage anymore. Really not, especially with the price of gas. And I apologize for not signing up. I was going to be here on time, but guess what? Henry County traffic. Because I live on the north side of Henry County and this is... Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Henson.
Do we have anyone else? Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate the public comments and we hope to have more people next time. We're going to move on to, um, Board comments.
I, I would like to make a comment, Chair Finney. Um, as we have been discussing, uh, we are engaging in the beginning, uh, stages of getting more information out to the public. Um, to that end, um, I think we would be open to receiving ideas from the public. What are questions you have about the process? Maybe we can start addressing those, uh, really high priority questions if we, you know, whatever's literally frequently asked, those should be one of our top priorities. So I would like to encourage the public to go ahead and send in your suggestions. If you have a question about the equipment, or if you have a question about the timelines, or how long it cures to, uh, how long it takes to cure a provisional ballot, send those questions in. Um, those are legitimate questions, um, that we're happy to answer, but you're not the only person with that question. I am sure there are a thousand more, so send them in.
And, um, in addition, um, in the future, we are looking to have, um, a direct inbox for those questions, but in the meantime, you guys can find our email addresses on the website as well as the, um, website for the Department of Elections. And Dr. Pitts, if you don't, Director Pitts, maybe there's a doctor in your future. Director Pitts, if you don't mind sharing that, uh, email address where they can send their questions. Um, as, uh, Board Member Stetslar stated, and as we've stated earlier, we are working on a campaign to educate the public. And we would love to know what your concerns are, what your questions are, to diffuse any confusion out there, um, so that you feel confident in the process of elections.
And the email address that they should use would be elections@co.henry.g a.us. And what I do is I will submit, um, a ticket to have that on our website. Any pressing questions, I'll come up with the, some information and communicate with you all. And we'll have that on the website along with the email address to anyone that has any concerns, anything that they would like to request, as Board Member Stetslar, uh, spoke of, that they can just submit it there and we'll be checking that frequently and responding as well as you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Finney, I'd like Director Pitts, please, I'd like one more question, please. I'd like, I don't like it that the constituents have to file open records requests to get this information. Is there any way in the future that we might could have this statistical analysis in some formatted form uh, so that the public can see those numbers without having to just kind of, I want it to be more transparent. That's my point.
So we do have a place on the, our county website with statistics. Uh, just not too long ago, um, Catherine Glenn, our Board Secretary, she has actually submitted that and it's current and updated on our website. So it is, it is available to the public on our website.
So specifically the questions, the things that were questioned by, by one of our constituents that were not answered, he had to, he had to, if he wanted the information, had to pay for it, right?
So if there is further information outside of what is on the website, yes, that's what, that is. It's an open records request, so that those do have to be submitted in accordance.
And my point is, why can't we have that information, why can't the Board have that information ourselves? Without having to, to file, to somebody constituent have to file an open records request?
I've never got a request from you all to want that information sent to you.
We haven't requested it, but why, obviously, I'm not making my point.
Well, um, Director Pitts? Um, I think, um, for clarification, um, Board Member, um, I was going to say Donna. I'm sorry.
You were going to say what?
I was going to call you Donna. I'm sorry. For clarification, um, Director Pitts has to follow, um, the law and the codes that are laid out about what information can be freely shared versus what has to go through an open records request. Um, and without knowing, um, the information that, um, the previous speaker came up and that was, he was asking about the statistical information, we wouldn't know what information, um, he requested versus what is freely, that she could share freely available on the website versus, um, what needs to be requested versus a open records request. Um, and I'm sure that he is a, um, very intelligent man and I'm sure his statistical information that he's asking for is a lot, um, more complicated than what, um, is on our website. So, um, and I understand what you're asking for, um, more, um, information freely available. But we also have to follow the law and the codes about what can be shared and what can't be shared. If that makes sense.
Going, um, along with that, Chair Finney, um, perhaps the better question is, what are we permitted to put out there without an open records request? Maybe we should think of...
What are we not permitted to put out there?
Maybe that's the better question. What aren't we permitted to put out there? In other words, constituents, electors, um, maybe filing open records requests unnecessarily and that's causing a backup. Uh, maybe we should take a look at just offering the full range of information that's, that we're permitted to. And this is going to be a longer term discussion, right? Because we have to really take this under consideration. But, uh, that might be what, um, uh, Board Member Crumley was, um, really alluding to is constituents often find it very frustrating that information is hidden behind a wall without realizing why it's hidden behind a wall. So although we're following all of the laws and regulations, I feel very confident that we could probably find a few things that we could offer without needing to go through the formal request process. But that's going to be a longer conversation, I think.
Definitely. Um, we do provide a lot of information, um, that we feel being transparent. We have everything from the Board Minutes. We have everything from the election results, the statistical reports. There are several things on the website that is ready and available. And the different open records requests or requests that we receive, it would be very difficult to appease everyone and to have everything that everybody want to have on the website that's readily available. So that's why there is a process in place called open records request. So, but this is a conversation that we can come back and have again.
Thank you, Director Pitts, and I do, um, agree with you and Board Member Stetslar and Board Member Crumley, that is a longer conversation. And when we do, then, um, Board Member Stetslar and Board Member Crumley, I may ask you both to, um, do what we call a needs assessment, to look at what we, um, currently have available versus, um, what can be made available. Um, so we'll have that as a longer conversation.
As well as what's not available. I would like to know that specifically.
Yes. And I, like I said, I will definitely talk to you both about putting you in charge of a needs assessment to get that done.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yes. Anything else as far as... Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Excuse me. Director Pitts, I wanted to follow up. You don't have to do it today, per se, since I've neglected to put it on the agenda. But our meetings with the vendors at the Secretary of State's, uh, convention, Tri-Tech specifically and Ballot D A, what were the, uh, the outcomes of those, uh, those meetings, those presentations? We were, I don't recall getting anything specifically and one of the vendors just calls me all the time.
I'm not sure which vendor you spoke with.
Tri-Tech, one specifically.
We did let Tri-Tech know that it was totally out of our budget to go forward with them this year. Um, Ballot D A, we have worked with them. We just recently had a Zoom virtual meeting with them in hopes to possibly use their, um, vendor, their program. But for the pricing with our budget, it just didn't fit. Um, the information wasn't enough to press, to change the budget around, to try to accommodate to have that at this time.
So you did meet with Ballot D A personally yourself?
We did a virtual meeting, maybe about two weeks ago.
I wish we could have been included with that meeting since we were on with the initial conversations with Ballot D A.
So they only did, the previous meeting, the previous meeting when they came and you all came out?
Yes.
They just did a refresher because we had not talked since then. It was nothing different.
They gave you cost estimates?
Mm-hmm. They sent out cost estimates after the in-person meeting. And then because of different things that happened in between then, they just wanted to, you know, as vendors do, they wanted to refresh us with some of their key things to draw, send, and love their product. And we actually did, but it just wouldn't work for us at this time.
For Ballot D A as well, or just both of them?
Both.
Okay. When, okay.
Any other Board discussion? Thank you, Director Pitts.
Thank you.
There's one other thing. Shall we go into, to reschedule the executive session?
Yes, that's the next thing over. Thank you, Director Pitts.
Director Pitts, I do have, in regards to the last, um, discussion that you guys will have in regard in Ballot D A, um, if you could refresh us with the cost estimates of implementing, let's say, the training program for the poll workers? If you have that information readily available or easily available, is that something you can send to the Board?
I definitely can send you to the Board. I can send it to you all by email.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And they had so many platforms. There was not one platform that we could afford or, um, agree on is needing?
Not at this time.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry that we were not included in that discussion to finalize the talks with the Ballot D A and Tri-Tech.
Anything else for? Okay, thank you, Director Pitts.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing on the, on the agenda is the schedule. So we would like to reschedule the executive session. Um, can everyone pull out your calendars? Our goal is to get the, um, evaluation done before October if possible. So I would like to look at next week, so that we can meet. And the goal of that, it, the executive session is for us to come together, go over how to write a goal and for us to get our goals done as a board. So next week, I am open, um, Monday, Tuesday, Wed- I'm open all week. Except for, um, Thursday, I'm sorry, except for Thursday.
Could we change the night maybe as well?
I don't know, um, Director Pitts? Oh, would one o'clock be the best time for us to meet next week? And we don't, we, because since it's going to be an executive session, we do not have to be in this room or be on camera, do we?
I thought we did.
And then move to go into executive.
You do have to have, like, a meeting.
Yes.
And then in the meeting, you can move to executive session.
My, but my question is, do, as long as we notify the public that we're having a meeting, we don't necessarily have to be on camera, do we?
No, you don't necessarily have to be on camera.
So that will open us up if we wanted to have an evening meeting and we, and we couldn't necessarily be in this room? No, we don't have to be here, but as long as we notify the public that we have a meeting, open it up, go into executive session. Okay, all right.
How long does it wait, need to give the public for that meeting?
Normally if it's a special call, maybe twenty-four hours.
Okay, okay. And do we, do we want an evening meeting?
I would refer that. Deidre.
Next Wednesday to go into executive session. Um, if we did an evening meeting, it would have to be, I would say five P M, I, it couldn't be-
No, or we wouldn't be-
We have candidate forums that, those days also.
Well, that's Monday and Tuesday, that's why I'm suggesting Wednesday.
Would later than that be too, too late for you, Deidre?
Later than that would be too late. So, um-
So we met for like an hour for five to-
So I'm asking, since you guys just had a point of clarity about the date, would one o'clock in the afternoon be a good time for you on Wednesday?
On Wednesday? Would one o'clock work on Wednesday?
I can do, I can do Wednesday either.
I don't have my calendar with me unfortunately, I'm sorry.
So can we, can we say ten, what, can one o'clock work for you?
One, one would work.
So let's, let's tentatively go for Wednesday, September fourteenth at one P M and Ms. Donna will confirm. Okay?
Good. And where, where would we?
Amika, I mean, Director Pitts? Director Pitts, we will tentatively meet next Wednesday, September fourteenth at one P M.
Okay, I'm putting that on my calendar and I will submit this, um, well, where would we be having it at?
I can't hear you.
Where would we be having this?
You, if you could let us know, because we are open, because we're going to do an executive session. So if we can meet here, that would be fine, if we need to meet at your office, that would be fine.
From here, since we have more room and more distant, social distancing and just better-
Yeah, so if we can meet here, that is fine.
So-
Because then we can go back there for executive session, so.
I have to verify that availability for that timeframe and day.
Okay, but if not, then we can meet somewhere else, if we can have another space. I don't know if there's another conference room here or something like that.
Yeah, I was going to say that, um, there are other rooms in this building. Um, so that, um, if there are members of the public that want to come for the, for the actual opening and then we retire into executive session.
I would have to discuss that with them out, to make sure that it is, um, available to even do it in that form or fashion. So I will definitely look into that and follow up with you all, I'll check into that as early as tomorrow.
Okay, and Ms. Donna will confirm, but tentatively, we're going to do next Wednesday, September fourteenth at one P M.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Um, our next meeting will be October fifth, twenty twenty-two, at one P M in this room. That's October fifth, twenty twenty-two, at one P M. Can I get a motion for an adjournment?
Some of, second.
All right. Can I get a vote? It's unanimous, we are adjourned.